Holy cow, they'll let anybody in this building.
Chill down.
That's a lot of markers. That's a lot of cover code, man, cover card. I, uh, I wanted to give you guys a 33. Yeah.
Want to make sure, you know, that Jordan bought it. Do you? Uh.
I'm sure I've read, I've only six fifteen. City Hall.
Don't be shy, Paul. It's good of you to do this. No.
No. Great time, counsel, we're good on that. Why record with what?
This is a Christmas present.
That's a very nice sign.
At the home. With pigs flying. Could be a.
Oh, he does.
Pink boy fire. Flying pigs. Hello kitty. My granddaughter's would have bought it and married to that.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is January the fifteenth. Time is now six P M. Regular meeting, city council will now come to order to please rise for pledge allegiance. Sheldon, please do this.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call, call, please.
Bonato.
Here.
Goodall.
Here.
Griggo.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
McCain.
Here.
Miles.
Here.
Rico.
Here. Item two approval of agenda, do you have any changes to the agenda? Come on. Is there a motion?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Call a vote, please.
Bonato.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Griggo.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. Item three, policy item or staff reports, do you have anything from policy or staff reports? Nothing? Okay. Item four, petitions or communications are written. Okay, I guess we have the, someone from the animal shelter. Who's going to speak on behalf of the animal shelter? Please state your name.
I'm Laurel Young. Before we begin, I just wanted to take a moment to say to Mr. Goodall, can you please tell Michelle that Noah's Ark is thinking of her and that we wish her well.
I definitely will, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Rico and some council members. I'm Laurel Young with Noah's Ark Animal Welfare Association, and we are here today to share some very exciting news. By the end of this month, we will be putting up a sign at the city's old pool site on East Main Street officially announcing it as the location for a new city animal shelter. We are very excited about this. We know that a new and proper city animal shelter building to help animals who have nowhere else to go and which will also serve as a place for people to come together as a community, such a building is not only a necessity, but it is also a dream and a hope shared by the people who live in this area by our organization and by you, the city. All the dogs, cats, kittens, and puppies are so fortunate to have so many people who care. The sign, which will soon go up, will be a marker, a marker of the steps already taken and of those which lie ahead that will be required to finally turn the dream, the hope, and the need of facility into a real thing. Now, I don't know how it is for you guys, but for myself, for our board members, and for our staff, both at the shelter and our thrift store, we're feeling a ton of questions from the public lately. They want to know when we will see some action on the city's new building. And while we simply don't have an exact answer, we do our best to answer them by sharing some information. We tell them that it's a process. Yes, there's a floor plan, and yes, there is a designated location. However, the shelter design, composition, and location have all evolved within this past year, all of which have taken some extra time to reconfigure and plan. We understand it's a very tedious process, requiring a lot of planning and adjustment, all of which Mr. Sun, Tom Beach, and this shelter building team have been working on. We want you guys all to know and everyone to know that they have been excellent to work alongside, and we hope that our community is just as appreciative as we are of all of their efforts. The location of the current shelter, current shelter, and its state licensing status graciously hinge on the hopes of a soon constructed facility. That, along with the pressing timeframe for completion, adds to the urgency of completing the project. So we understand that this is not a simple thing to accomplish. We really hope that the community agrees with us when we say that the city's designation of $400,000 to construct a new city shelter demonstrates the city's commitment to provide proper animal welfare and protection. So far, it looks like the designated funds will cover most of the building's shell. However, all the needed modifications and changes have caused unforeseen additional expenses to arise, possibly creating a shortfall in having the shelter which can open its doors without too much delay. We want the city to know that you are not alone in this venture. We have the support of Noah's Ark and more than likely the support of your Karen community behind you. Our organization and organization's seven board members are actively working on raising funds in regards to the building's interior walls and details. It is our hope that when the new shelter is constructed, it will be able to serve its purpose as soon as possible with hardly any, if not no, lapse in time. We really truly want to give animals what they need. We want you all to know you have our support, and should this council desire to have a work session or informal meeting with us, we would be honored to accept your invitation. We also invite you to come and visit us and all of our furry friends out of the shelter where we are at currently. And if you can't, I brought along a couple, just a few pictures that I'll leave here for you guys to pass around and just have a look. You can also visit us on Facebook and C O R S and all of our good things that we're doing down there. Again, thank you, Mayor Rico, thank you, members of city council, and thanks to all of the staff, really, of the city, and to all of those who deeply care for animals. We have a wonderful evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll be in there future of bills to get that done, so. Evan Kathleen Griggo.
Whatever you want. Not necessary.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I am Ed Griggo. My daughter Kathleen is with me this evening. We are here on behalf of the Trinidad, Los Ananas County Chamber of Commerce to announce to you that it is that time of the year for the Chinworth, Chinworth Award, the G A G Chinworth Award nominations. The nominations are now open. We ask, I'm asking the citizenry at large to submit nominations for individuals in the community that they feel are worthy, that have done things in the community they feel are worthy of the nomination and to be recognized as one of the prestigious awards that is provided in the community by the Los Ananas, Trinidad, Los Ananas County Chamber of Commerce. The nominations are open and forms are available. I brought one this evening, I'll leave with it. There can be copies as many times. We invite members of city council, members of the staff, or anyone else in the community to nominate a person who they feel should be considered for the award. I will leave this with you. Also, in keeping with the tradition that Laura DeVallet did earlier this morning when she made the same presentation to the Los Ananas County Commissioners, she brought by and instructed us to leave you with some munchies for, you can distribute, and I think the value of these things are low enough where I don't think they have to be, you have to be held accountable for.
I looked on my, on the day, so I was sure Lusky had taken ones.
You can distribute them as you see fit, and you do have a executive session coming up, so quite possibly how long it is you need that to sustain yourself.
The one question I have on that is, do you have a list of people that have been, have had the award in the past, have been or renominated? That would be something in case anybody uncomes.
Yes, yes, that is available at the Chamber of Commerce offices. All the information is available there. As far as the nomination, nomination forms are as well with full instructions of what is required and what is expected that they have. So I'll leave this with you or to see with the staff.
To see with the staff and up distribute.
Okay.
When is the cutoff date to submit?
January thirty first is the last day to be able to submit them. They will re-review thereafter the award. Award ceremony will occur on February the twenty third at the Hall of Fame. Oh, yes, yeah. And all the nomination form is sort of stressed on there, is the nomin, the nominator must notify the nominee that they are nominating them, and a full and complete biography of the nominee is required in order to review. And I'll put it into consideration.
Is that a new rule?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, kinda, yes.
It's to create a level playing field.
Totally makes sense. Totally makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your.
Mr. Toby Orna?
Start to watch.
I didn't come here to get abused.
You got way more than you get.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager, eminent lawyer, and staff. The reason I'm here tonight is to talk to you about the marijuana money. I, I know you've probably had many conversations about this, but there's never been anything in the paper. And I think the first thing you should do is, we have people on this staff who've been working here for years and years, and probably worked for a dollar fifty an hour when they first started. That'd be a good start. And then the dog pound needs a lot of help. I spend one day every week down there checking it out and feeding the puppies. Anyway, I appreciate your time, and God bless you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Griggo.
Good evening. And I want to thank you for giving me a few moments here to kind of do you an update as to where Arkansas Public Power Authority is on a couple of issues. If your calling was here a few months ago, we talked about a potential transaction with the Tri-State Generation Transmission Association. They had come to us with a proposal where they were basically going to take over all of our power supply, transmission contracts and operations in exchange for a contract, power supply contract that would run through 2050. We spent several months on negotiations regarding that transaction, and then in early summer, we were notified by the Western Area Power Administration that the method, the way that Tri-State was going to handle the assignment of our federal hydro contracts. So ARPA has a federal hydro contract, the WAPA contract, and it supplies about twenty-eight percent of our power supply, so it's a significant portion of our power supply contract. We would, if this transaction was to go through, we would assign that contract to Tri-State, and they had blended that into their pricing for the transaction. That did not, that was not, WAPA gave us a notice that that was not consistent with the contracts, with the WAPA contracts, and therefore Tri-State had to figure out a different way to price their transaction. And that really, it really brought the negotiations to a halt. They had to go through and do a lot of new modeling on the transaction, had to figure out how they were going to handle this condition. But there was also a second issue that had been evolving over the, over the few months, and that had to do with the level of renewables that Tri-State would allow the ARPA members to have in this transaction, and that was at a five percent level. Now, you think about what you're reading about renewables and the, the impact of them on all utilities right now. You know, they've done, they've done so much with improving the solar technologies, improving the wind, wind turbines. They still have the production tax credits and investment tax credits which help lower the cost of those, that we had some members push back and say, you know, this is too long of a contract to be tied to that amount of renewables. And so we had a couple of members push back pretty hard, and in visiting with Tri-State over the last few months, we have renewed that discussion, but quite frankly, haven't really gotten, gotten very far. And so what we've done is, because we need to have all of the members unanimous' approval before we can do that transaction, because if you recall, the Tri, the transaction would be between Tri-State and Trinidad, and Tri-State in Lamar, and Tri-State in LaHunta, and so we couldn't have just four members, we had to have all six. And so if we had one or two that would not agree to this, then the deal could not go through, and we've had some that pushed back on it. And so what we've done then is, and so also along this time, as I said, we're watching the, the impact of renewables and some of the pricing, what we did then in, in November is we went out with a request for proposals for power supply, because we, we started looking at some of the opportunities, we were seeing some of that kind of pricing, and thought it might be the time, an opportunity to lock in prices on a power supply from 2025 to 2034. We have a current contract that goes through 2024. And so we issued this request for proposal and got back some very competitive pricing in that timeframe. Now, we went to your typical, we didn't just throw the, throw the request for proposal out, we went to known utilities, utilities we know that can perform. Because you think about it, you know, signing a contract that doesn't begin till 2025, you want to make sure you have folks who can deliver the power by this time. And so right now, where we're at in this process is we've got the Tri-State transaction on hold. We have not, we have not, we've not said we're not going to go through with it, but there are some issues we still need to be worked out with it. So we've got that one on hold, and we've got these requests for proposals where we are talking to a couple, three or four different companies who, whose responses, responses have engendered further discussion. You know, nailing down details, nailing down pricing, when you get into this kind of discussion, you want to make sure, for instance, if the transmission they're bidding is from transmission, that the power supply is from firm resources, those kinds of things. So we're in those kinds of negotiations right now. I hope by the end of January, we have a board meeting, I believe it's January thirty first or something. I hope that we have narrowed our list of options down to just a couple, and what we would do with that and get from pricing for those years is that we can compare that to what the Tri-State transaction was and just see, see which one appears to be the better option, and then we'll take that, or the board will start considering what's the next move for us. So we've kind of changed directions a little bit. Again, we still have a Tri-State transaction on the table. However, it may not in the long run be the best, the best deal for, for our members, and so we're still trying to flesh some of that out. Okay? Thank you.
Sheldon, do you have any other hard day?
No, I guess they're very different proposals, and in, in one case, ARPA would cease to exist and the debt would disappear, and in the other, ARPA would continue to exist and purchase power from these alternative entities. And the question of whether they would become more involved and play a role in either buying down an existing contract or assuming some of our debt is, it's a fairly, fairly complicated idea which has been quite a bit.
But Sheldon's absolutely right, there is, it's a really different approach from the two options, and so, you know, we'll have to work through what the differences are and what the pros and cons are.
And there are also tiny differences.
There are.
Some of the savings in some proposals are back-weighted, and in the Tri-State proposal they're front-weighted, so discount rates and how risky you think future flows are have a lot to do with evaluating the proposals, so it's an interesting question.
And we've got some folks here that help us out, trying to determine that by some information.
And Greg is on the task force to evaluate the proposals, so I welcome his involvement, Greg.
Well, we're not quite there yet, so.
Good, thank you very much.
Please work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number five, our consent agenda. Item five A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of January the ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Item B, appointment of Jonathan Norris to the Planning, Planning, Zoning and Governance Commission, I believe he's been vetted already. Item C, approval of the bills. Item D, approval of the payroll, January the twelfth, two thousand and nineteen through January the twenty fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Do you have a motion, please?
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
Vote, please.
Is Mr. Norris present?
Yes, he is.
Please don't have discussion unless there is particular item on a move to.
Oh, that's all right, if there's anyone who wants to take anything off.
Yeah. Call vote, please.
Bonato.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Griggo.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. We have no public hearings or item seven unfinished business. Item eight, miscellaneous business. Item eight, memorial resolution acknowledging the contributions of Roy E. Mitchell, Jr. upon his passing. He was a previous city councilperson, and I'll read it in a moment, but we have a motion, please, for approval on that. Sub move. Second, yes? And as far as the discussion goes, I'm going to read the resolution. The City of Trinidad, Colorado, Resolution number fifteen forty. A memorial resolution of the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, acknowledging the contributions of Roy E. Mitchell, Jr. upon his passing. Whereas almighty God in his infinite wisdom has seen fit to take Roy E. Mitchell, Jr. from this earthly life, and whereas during his lifetime, Roy E. Mitchell, Jr. served our country in the United States Navy, was a distinguished educator, and a civil servant and promoter of Trinidad, and whereas Roy E. Mitchell, Jr. faithfully served the people of the city of Trinidad as a member of the Trinidad City Council, and mayor pro town from January nineteen eighty-eight to January nineteen ninety-two, and thereafter manager of the Colorado Welcome Center of Trinidad. And whereas upon the passing of Roy E. Mitchell, Jr., the city of Trinidad wishes by this resolution to acknowledge his many contributions to the community and to express its regret and sorrow to the family of Roy E. Mitchell, Jr. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, that the mayor and city council do hereby extend their condolences to the family of Roy E. Mitchell, Jr., and by this resolution do hereby remember the many outstanding contributions he made to the Trinidad community. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall becoming part of the official minutes of the proceedings of the Trinidad City Council, and a copy of the same shall be provided to the family of Roy E. Mitchell, Jr. Introduced, read, and adopted this fifteenth day, January two thousand and nineteen. Mayor Philip Rico, Michelle Miles, Mayor Pro Town, Rusty Goodall, council member, Carlos Lopez, council member, Joe Bonato, council member, Karen Griggo, council member, Anthony, council member, Anthony Mate, council member. Any discussion or any comments? Okay. Call vote, please.
Bonato.
Yes.
Goodall.
Yes.
Griggo.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
McCain.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Rico.
I'll pass this along, everybody sign accordingly, and then we'll get that out. Different one?
Okay. We have a nicer copy. Don't smear it, sir. Don't smear it. That's all right, I didn't like my signature on the first one, so.
Item A B, we have some liaison changes that we're going to recommend tonight to council. Karen Grago has been asked to be removed from the tourism. And we had a little bit of difference, and I've talked to what we need to do with arts and culture. I currently serve on the arts and culture, but because of the timeframe that it, I think it's four o'clock, I've asked Mr. Mate if he would take my position on the arts and culture, and I will take the tourism board liaison. So council doesn't have any questions about that?
And Karen goes to Main Street?
Yes, she goes to Main Street, which they've been asking for a liaison, so Karen, if you think that. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. On to council reports. Just without.
I don't have nothing to report.
Rested.
So it's been a hell of a week. Mainly, I'd like to say, the amount of support and prayers and cards and everything from my wife and me during this difficult time, I'll never be able to express how much it has meant to us and carried us along through this healing process we're going through. Michelle's, for those who haven't heard, Michelle's doing very well. She is home. And she's walking the use of her right arm again, and her speech is almost back to normal. So it's an amazing thing, and I just want to say thank you to everybody. It meant a lot.
I have nothing to add other than to wish Michelle the very, very best. There aren't enough messages that can be sent.
Thank you.
I want to reiterate those facts, too, sentiments rather. I wish her the best. Last week, I was in Denver. We had our interviews for our executive director position for CML. They went very well. We will be making our final decision on the 22nd at our next executive board meeting. But we have two very good candidates in Kenvin Bommer and also Wayne Williams, the former Secretary of State.
We're going to play him.
He did. So, but they both went very well, but that's really all that I have to report on at this moment.
Okay, we'll go back to Michelle. She has some to report.
Yeah. Councilman Grago and I attended a training, which is a joint session with county commissioners. Felix Lopez was there, the county administrator was there, a number of other people, and Karen and I, and Planning and Zoning Commission. It was a dollar training. Yeah, I haven't been on council a while, it's most of the things that I can do, but it's always good to be reminded and hear discussions over them. A lot of things about open meetings, you can never have too many reminders about that sort of thing. But to cut to the quick, I thought it was good that we got together with Planning and Zoning, and the discussion sort of went off of the main subject of DOLA, and we talked about things like conditional use permits and renewals of conditional use permits. So I just thought I'd mention that I'd like to build a closer relationship with Lisa and Tom. Okay? Go ahead.
Expanding on what Michelle just said. It dawned on me that the boards, we don't have council rep, or we don't have any interaction with Planning and Zoning. And it was interesting to me that they have some of the same questions about the CUPs and what we're going to do with them, same as we do. So I would really like to see if we could do a work session with Planning and Zoning and talk about what our concerns are and if either group has a solution. Somebody from, I can't remember who it was, mentioned that night that they, for their public notices for the Planning and Zoning Commission, that they do the regular legal notice, but then they put it in plain language for the, for everybody to understand. So it might be something that you, we might want to consider.
Meaning?
Well, you know, you have the public, the notice of the public hearings, and it's in, it's in somewhat easy language to understand, but some of it is not. So what they're saying is, if we have a request for a conditional use permit or whatever, just plainly stated we're having this hearing for, to discuss a liquor license or whatever it is.
Totally makes sense. Is the lawyer, I object to clear language. It totally makes sense. It makes sense. For ghosts, more of an obfuscated, no, just for that, totally makes sense.
It's also like Chad says, everything will be in plain English.
It goes your idea.
We still have Anthony, you know, if you bail on us, we still have Anthony. He interprets, he's our, he's our.
Right.
No.
And I never.
Well, my friends from Noah's Ark were here tonight. And I know I'm being prejudiced, but that's a cause that's very near and dear to my heart because for almost four years, I diligently worked on that project of mine. And I know Tom is working on it, Greg is working on it. We've had issues with change of leadership at Noah's. We've had change of leadership at City Hall. But we need to get off dead center on this thing. I mean, when Laura was very polite when she mentioned that Noah's Ark is on the brink of losing their accreditation as an animal shelter because the facilities down there are in such bad shape, we need to move on this. I mean, there's only so much time that we can tell the people that come in and inspect the shelter that we're getting a new shelter. We've been telling them that for four years.
Is it possible to have a work session?
I'm sure it is, but at this point in time, where does it sit with Tom? Do you want to address that or?
Sure. I just spoke to the Geotech company yesterday, about four o'clock, four thirty. They, that's our next step. We are still in negotiation with Schultz Construction, the construction of the shell of the building. In order to negotiate properly with them, we had to do the Geotech work for moving the building from the front corner where we had originally, kind of like Greg wrote, up to where the old pool site was. And they did some more board testing, they had trouble with their board material, with their building rating and stuff. I finally got some answer from them. I've encouraged them to send me the final report as soon as possible. They gave me a verbal report yesterday, what possibly had to be done. But we can't really do anything until we get the final paper report to submit to Schultz and to submit to anybody else as to what needs to be done with this pool site before we proceed. As soon as we get that, we can get number.
Did they give you any idea when that report might be posted?
He was not real clear. I'm hoping to see it by the end of the week.
If not, would you apply pressure on them?
I've been calling them and emailing them, if not every day, every other.
Because we funded this thing in 2017, didn't we?
Yeah.
And it's going on too long, and we have a commitment with Mr. Chmino and that organization for that piece of property as well, that we need to hold ourselves to a standard to as well.
If I may, we have, we've had some changes, like Mr. Grago said, we had some changes in the building, as Ms. Young said. We've altered the building from the original site, we've altered the building size, we've altered the building height, and it's construction, we've had several alterations to try to bring it into the 20,000 elements that we have, and to make it doable for Noah's Ark when they get in there, to do a ten to finish, so that they don't have to keep, you know, get some idea of how they want it done. We're getting one.
Do we have a design already on the building?
Pretty much, yeah.
We have four plans.
Exterior design, so.
Well, the shelter staff is concerned because I think that lease comes up in October. I think so with Mr. Chmino. So, you know, I don't, I don't expect anything drastic to happen there, but we would be in a world of hurt.
You know, you mentioned that they're on the verge possibly of losing their accreditation. When is that accreditation?
I, that I don't know. I think it's always the first of June. But we've been not buying them off, but telling them year after year that, you know, the funds for something like this, it's a, it's a major project, you know? And I understand, Mr. Beach, what we're talking about as far as delays in construction, but I mean, and you've got to understand from the nonprofit's point of view, we've been telling supporters for four years that they're donating to a new animal shelter, and there is no progress.
And if I may, honest, quite honestly, tonight is the first night I've heard that you're risking losing your accreditation. I have not heard that before.
It's, it's been that way ever since I was the president of the board four years ago. And the shelter as it sits is, is less than adequate, let me put it that way.
I agree.
But do you, do you close the shelter and then risk having all the animals running loose and having animals that are suffering or, you know, being neglected by owners, you know? So they, the organizations, I can't, what's the name of the organization that accredits the shelter? Do you know?
Yes, APA, I think they're coming pretty soon.
Are they? I thought so.
Animal Protection Association.
So they have to make sure that the standards, you know, are, are up, so that that's a concern of ours as well.
I want to play a fire.
Yeah, I was going to say, put some pressure on it and help us to maybe make some decisions with the orders too, so.
I, I don't know what Kim, Laura put in those pictures, but I really would like council to see them because have, have any of you been down at the shelter?
Not at all.
It's, it's not, it's less than optimal. I mean, the staff does a phenomenal job with what they have to work with. So I would appreciate any consideration.
I would be supportive of a work session here soon because we need to have something being started in there by the spring.
Oh, certainly.
Well, you know, we were trying to be diligent with the city's money. We could have come and asked you for an extra $500.
I understand that.
No, I understand.
But so if, if the engineering firm is the one that's, we're having a hiccup with in terms of, we told them this was our budget, and then they come back with a larger number, we say, no, this is what we can spend, work with those perimeters, or parameters.
But we're, it kind of starts all over when you do that.
Well, they should have listened the first time.
All right, that's good. Hold on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch Mate.
Following those discussions, good luck to Michelle. I hope that it continues and is very successful beyond that. I have nothing to add.
Okay. I think we're all agree with the sentiments of Michelle. We honor her, we love wishes to her, and it sounds like she's progressing well.
Some lady. Yeah. You know, if we're talking about the liaison appointment, to me, I'm wondering, who's the liaison for the chamber now and who's the liaison for the Fort Carson?
We really don't have any dedicated liaisons for the chamber. We've never really had one.
Well, yeah, I was one.
And, yeah, you were, but it wasn't a dedicated like we have with, other than like the Main Street and Arts and Culture, those were. And was there any reason why we never did do anything with those? No reason?
So we're just loading up in the air with Fort Carson, and we're sitting here like a dead duck on a wall that doesn't know what's going on in Fort Carson, and Fort Carson doesn't know what's going on in the City of Trinidad. The way I looked at it is that this is a very important situation. I don't know if Mr. Stimpleman is still the liaison, or Mr. Yorin is right here to testify that I, he appointed me as the liaison all the time, but we've got to get this job done, and which is kind of important.
Regarding Chamber of Commerce, if you look at the composition, really all of the liaisons are to city boards. With the exception of, we did appoint Mr. Stimpleman probably a decade ago to be the liaison for Fort Carson. Obviously, I mean, it's, council can do what they want to, but that was the reason why we didn't have somebody dedicated to the chamber as a liaison.
Why don't we do this, maybe at the next work session, we just bring that up and see what we want to do with those two positions. Okay. Well, from my end, I attended, I think everybody knew that I was going to attend the Governor Polis, Governor Polis's inauguration. That was, that was a really nice event. The inauguration event was really, really kind of beautiful because we had various speakers and of course, you know, the inauguration itself, it was done on the west end of the Capitol. I think, Anthony, you said that you kind of saw a little bit of it?
Yeah, it was a live telecast.
So it was, it was pretty neat. And then, of course, the evening event was a little bit different. It was not a wide-open venue. It was kind of a U-shaped venue, so there were so many, there were probably three, four thousand people there. And one side is where all of the performers were at, and it was so jam-packed that you had to go around, it was like a U-shaped on the other side, and you had to see what was going on on a big screen TV, probably the size of that wall, maybe bigger. So it was pretty hard to actually get to see anybody in person at the evening event. But overall, it was a really nice event. So I was glad that we were able to represent the community, so it was very nice. We, from the Southwest Chief Commission at Amtrak, we voted on it yesterday, that we have hired a director for the Amtrak position. That person will be starting there, I'm sure, shortly. But we needed a director to guide us on the everyday transactions that go on, so we feel like we've got the right person in place, and we'll move forward with that. There's a lot of stuff happening with Amtrak right now. The latest I heard that came up in the meeting last Friday, Amtrak was considering possibly buying the track from Trinidad to Lamy. I'm not sure exactly what that's going to do to the overall situation, I really don't know. But we're still working on the overall project, which entails eventually moving, or having the Amtrak from Fort Collins all the way down to Trinidad. The big problem that I see right now is the bullet train that they've been talking about, that they're talking, there's like four different companies that are interested in doing that. And they keep talking that it's private money, but because of the cost of this thing, it's billions and billions of dollars, that I think that it's, at some point, they will be going after public funding. And I mentioned to the commission that my concern was that if that were to happen, and they start really looking serious at it, that they're going to start taking some of the, possibly taking some of the money from the Amtrak that is currently, we're working on, and they're going to start splitting some of that money. And, and I told them we need to not lose sight of what our original goal was. So that's, that's kind of the latest with what's happening with the Amtrak situation. Karen gave me this, just after, this, right before the meeting. We're getting a lot of press on the Fisher's Peak. Last week, when I was in Denver at the inauguration, talked to two or three people who knew about the project, and they're excited about it, you know? And so we're getting, you know, this came out of the Denver Post, I guess, when was this?
This Wednesday.
Wednesday? So we're getting a lot of press on Fisher's Peak, and everybody that you talked to, I have not heard one negative, other than our current legislature, we have.
Oh, she is.
And just to inform council again, that I'm going to meet with Luis Lopez, who's the chairperson of the county commissioners tomorrow, and are going to sit down and just kind of get a general discussion going as to how maybe we could try to move forward with working together on, in certain areas. And then at that point, we'll turn it over to Greg and to Mr. Doran, and let him run with it and see where they can work, where we can all work together, maybe we can take some money down the road as well. So that's all I have.
Greg? We've had some discussions about possible upcoming work sessions. One I mentioned was on economic development. We've talked about the need to rewrite or amend the Marylanda sales tax allocation policy. And also, this is the, this is the new term for planning and zoning, for zoning policy, but it's called Unified Development Code. That's really.
And are gonna sit down and just kind of get a general discussion going as to how maybe we could try to move forward with, uh, working together on, in certain areas. And then at that point, we'll turn it over to Greg and to Mr. Doran Town and let him run with it and see where they can work, uh, where we can all work together and maybe we can take us some money down the road as well, so, uh, that's all I have.
Greg? Um, we've had some discussions about possible upcoming work sessions. One I mentioned was an economic development. We've talked about the need to rewrite or amend the marijuana sales tax allocation policy. And also, this is the, this is the new term for planning and zoning, for zoning policy, but it's called Unified Development Code. That's really what ours is supposed to be now. And in the near future, um, we need to sit down with all of you and go through that document. Just, I looked at some dates, um, for the economic development one, if we could do it next Tuesday, that would work, and then the twenty-ninth for the marijuana sales tax. And if you do the eleventh for the Unified Development Code, planning and zoning is meeting is the next day.
The date of the city is the eleventh?
Yeah. I'm sorry, do we, can we combine these with, uh, meetings or? Well, I tried that and that and I got lots of pushback from several council members to not do that on the day of the meeting. So I can't win for losing them this once. Well, I, whatever, I thought there were some people that had concerns, but you can't decide that we don't wanna do that?
No, we could do, if there's, if there are maybe, if there's one or something that we could do prior to a meeting, we could maybe do that too and then have the major discussion at a different date.
Yeah, I mean, a date to come in for an hour, you know, if we can do it before a meeting, if there's. It's okay with me, but I, like I said, I was getting comments that people didn't like the hour before the meeting.
I have a, what about if, uh, the twenty-ninth is the fifth Tuesday of this month? Would that be something we could look at?
I have the twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
Yeah, the twenty-ninth.
We've got another discussion.
I'm, I would be, uh, can we hold that?
Yeah.
I think your concern was having a work session and having to cut it off going into a city council meeting and losing discussion.
Or having a work session that, and then voting on it that night.
Yeah.
That is my concern.
Right.
But that, that's all.
So you're thinking of maybe possibly two work sessions, one on the, uh, next Tuesday and, or just one on the twenty-ninth?
Actually, three. Can we, we need to? That's where we run into the problem is when you're combining. I'm not talking about combining it with the meeting, but can we have two on one day?
Two segments.
Yeah.
Sure. I'd rather go an hour and a half than two separate forty-five minute discussions. Okay.
Sure.
I'm flexible, I'll do whatever you want.
All right. Just plan around that.
Okay.
And the dates are?
So it'll be the twenty-ninth and then we gotta pick another one for the Unified Development Code. Might have to go out a whole nother week. So it would probably be the nineteenth. Unless you think, can, that can be done in an hour before a meeting, but I don't think so.
So the twenty-ninth of January and the nineteenth of February?
Yeah.
What time on the twenty-ninth of the nineteenth?
Nineteenth is President's Day.
I thought the eighteenth was the President's Day.
It is.
The Monday.
My calendar says the eighteenth, yeah.
Uh, so the twenty-ninth of January, what day is that on?
That's a Tuesday.
A Tuesday?
Which one is that? That's for economic development and marijuana sales tax.
That's January twenty-ninth. Right.
What time is that, sir?
What time would you recommend? Any particular time?
Anytime you want.
Any, any issues, uh, you'll do it at, let's say, four to six?
Yeah.
It works? It'll work? Four to six, okay?
Four to six.
Okay, and then on the nineteenth of February, we would have which?
Um, the Unified Development Code. And that probably is the full session. Yeah, I, I, that's a two-hundred-page document, give or take.
We are sleepy base.
Same time for the, uh?
That's right. So you all have a copy of that document, so, um, there are gonna be some revisions to it and we'll try to get you the updated one as quick as we can, but.
Oh, this is what we talked about?
Back in December.
Back in December, okay. I thought it was a different name, but I, we're not enough.
It's at the same time.
But it, uh, that, that's one of the documents you wanna read ahead of time because, and that is for questions, comments, any of that kind of stuff we can get to as much quicker.
It is.
Trying to run through a whole document.
Yeah, it is. The nineteenth is the date of our normal meeting.
Is it?
Yes.
Cause we have the fifth and then the nineteenth.
Hmm. What about the twelfth?
Is that planning and zoning on the twelfth?
That's T and Z.
And the nineteenth?
Then how about the twenty-sixth?
We can do that.
If it's that long a document, it might not be a bad idea to have a whole month to go over two hundred pages.
So you had it for a month, month and a half. I read it Christmas morning, Greg.
So you're gonna have some little dates to that?
Yeah.
So we're gonna do that work session on the twenty-sixth?
Yep, and again from four to six P M?
That'd be the time, that's on February, right? Yeah, twenty-sixth.
That's, and the twenty-sixth, okay. Unless you were going to bring up the Ethics and Code of Conduct?
Yeah.
And?
Correct, and I, it would be nice if we could have a work session on that as well. I, I mean, I.
That may be, that may be one that we could have maybe before.
Prior to.
Prior to regularly.
That's, that's not right.
I can tell you guys are excited for my, my Ethics Code.
Yeah.
So, and we can, we can do that either the fourth or the nineteenth, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Whatever yours want.
Oh, you're right.
The fifth.
The fifth. The fifth.
Why don't we try that on the fifth? Who's on first? I think that's down the road a little bit.
Yeah, we'll have a work session then, then the meeting. And that's a work type thing.
Uh, while it be at five o'clock, right?
And then I just wanted to announce too that our, make sure everybody knows, our area representative for DOLA is now the Chief of Staff for the Lieutenant Governor. So they are advertising for an opening. If you know anybody with the interest in that position, it should be in DOLA's website.
She wasn't in that position already, was she?
No. Is she in?
Yeah.
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 We had that sort of thing.
Upward.
I very much wanna fill the position, so please encourage people to apply.
Okay.
And that's all.
Mayor.
Your, what they called, they ever, ever, what's all of them were? Mr. Yorin called the eminent lawyer.
I never know what he's gonna say. It was, no, but, uh, mayor council members, and I will say, council of good all, I wanna echo everyone's sentiments, and, and I'm surprised that Michelle was doing better. You know, I measure things in Facebook time, and I heard about the episode she had and then days later she was on Facebook, so I knew things were, were better.
I, I have to share a funny story because, uh, she did finger isolation therapy. And so how we come up with this, we're sitting there in the hospital on a Wednesday and she goes, "Doc, check this out," and she flipped me off. And the doc, the doc says, "Finger isolation therapy, that's very good." So I mean, she maintained her sense of humor.
So, and, and council members, I just wanted to mention that I did submit to you the Ethics Code and the Code of Conduct. It's ironic that Councilwoman, Count, former Councilwoman Fletcher is here, since she did the, uh, the former Code of Conduct and, uh, and, and of course, that was source. And so I just wanna say, uh, you know, I did wanna have another council meeting where I told all of you, "Well, I'm working on it, so I will get it to you." I wanted to get a draft to you and, um, Councilman Matek has been having fun picking it apart and looking for typos and things of that nature. But any, any feedback you have, now that you have that document? I had been telling a few people who've spoken to me about it. I wanted to be a little bit conversational, emphasize a number of points that I thought needed to be emphasized and really even words of explanation in the Ethics Code, when I thought that was necessary. The Code of Conduct, the way I did it and the way it occurs to me as I was writing it is that a Code of Conduct is really suggested behavioral, uh, norms and what you are supposed to, to do from a behavioral standpoint. As, and, and that, I don't mean to discuss that now, I, um, but that is how I, I wrote it. So any feedback you have and, and then we will have the, the work session or whatever, uh, we have that. But anything you wanna say, that's the only thing I have to report on. And I'm glad to have at least a draft of that to you.
Uh, one final thing that I forgot to mention earlier to anybody is that, uh, on the eleventh of February, we're going to have, uh, the State of the City again addressed, uh, that I'll be presenting. And we're going to have that at the college that we did last year. And, uh, Karen, did we say the time, six o'clock, right? The eleventh?
Eleven.
Six P M?
At the college?
At the college again, right?
Maybe the powers stay on the stage.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Excuse me, I forgot something too.
Yes.
From our DOLA, uh, training, uh, the lady that did the training's name is Andy Hill and she gave us, um, a rip site or a link to go to if you want. I do see the demographics of Los Angeles County as far as population. Uh, and it's, uh, anonymous data at DOLA.
Anonymous data at DOLA.
Mm-hmm. Glad to mention it.
Good, thank you.
I'm gonna turn it over to you then.
Six. All right. I just, uh, noticed Mr. Yorin's out there in the, in the audience and I'm just glad to have you aboard, welcome you to this, to the Planning and Zoning Board and probably have great assets to help us out on that. So, good luck to you and, uh, thank you for applying for that. Appreciate it. Well, we appreciate it, thank you very much. Thank you.
Uh, the other thing that I forgot to mention, um, we have our monthly creative district board meeting and it's very productive for, you know, everyone was thrilled to get good updates on, on what's going on. We're getting the word out, there's space to create. The board is focusing on so much more than that. And, uh, thanks to the city, we received a grant and we're going to be doing the poetry festival again this summer. Um, we have not selected a date at this point, but we'll call it in June, as it was last year, and, uh, the city providers grant, so thank you very much for that. Anything else?
I got one left to add. If you forgive. Sorry. Um, senior moment.
No.
Um, I just wanted to add that, um, TYC Pizza has now added on wings to their menu, so if you guys want wings, they have wings. I forgot, I was asked to mention that.
Okay. Okay, on to item eleven, our executive session two. For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiations under CRS Section twenty-four, dash six, dash four oh two, four E, the parts of T I F. Motion going to executive session.
Mm-hmm.
First and a second, call roll, please.
This is the second?
All right.
Bernato?
Yes.
Gordo?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Veltes?
Yes.
Fitzhain?
Yes.
Mass?
Yes.
Becca?
Yes.